All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cool. All right, yeah, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
So stop.
Hi, Julia.
Hey there, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Just managing through this dreary day.
A rough one. April showers.
I was about to say, I'm really looking forward to the Mayflowers. Exactly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody on this rainy Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm reaching out to Jose. Here's Steve. Oh, that's good. Hi, Steve.
How's it going?
Hi Jake.
Hello. Took a 30-second nap between the Finance Subcommittee meeting and this meeting.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah. I'm glad you said between, not during.
That's the secret, Steve.
I already wrote the minutes, so it's too late to adjust.
Hi, Jose.
Hi, everyone.
I assume Ursula is coming. Carrie, Steve, you just saw her. Okay, great. We will wait for her. Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Trying to catch up with Curtis, I see, huh, Joe?
I got a long way to go.
I shaved four days ago. I don't know.
You shave after every meeting and it's back by the next? So I don't know what kind of competition this is, but it's not one that I'm in.
Some of our meetings are so long, I actually shave once or twice during them.
It's a nice color scheme going from Jake to Curtis to Joe.
All the transition that we go through in life.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone's here, I think, so we can get started. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Thursday, April 7, 2022, at 5:01 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. This meeting is taking place virtually pursuant to the law, signed by Governor Baker. I don't know that I need to read that entire text. This meeting will be broadcast on WillieNet TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and will be posted on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours of the meeting. I'm going to call the role Julia Bowen.
Here.
Christina Conry is here, Jose Constantine.
Here.
Curtis Alphenbein.
Here.
Carrie Green.
Here.
Ursula Malloy.
Here.
And Steve Miller.
Here.
Thank you. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. First up on our agenda is the FY '23 budget updates. And I'm turning this over to Jake and Joe.
Yeah, I'll jump in first. Thank you all for doing yet another special school committee meeting, the second one in two weeks. We're very grateful to you for your time. As you know, because you've been following the progress of our presentations to the Lanesboro and the Williamstown Finance Committees, and in Lanesboro's case, a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. We have presented our budget. The school committee did what your job is to do, which is to advocate for the budget that you believe best serves the kids that the communities elect you to go to bat for, and you did that work. Finance committees and select boards have have different jobs and different missions than than school committees. They're responsible for making everything in the town work and oftentimes competing interests because every single resident of a town matters and is important and the services that they receive matter. So we do have times, of course, where where the school committee has done its job well, select board and finance committees are doing their job well, but where that results in is is in a disagreement about what the bottom line should be. And as you know, that's where we we found ourselves with Lanesboro. So tonight, we are presenting you a slightly reworked budget in order to to get to a number that that we hope will earn the endorsement of the the Lanesboro Finance Committee and perhaps the Select Board and then ultimately the town meeting later on in May. We arrived at at our our new assessment bottom line for Lanesboro through a couple of means. The first means was by increasing how deeply we are dipping into school choice and applying that that to the Lanesboro assessment. Now, as you as you realize from the last time we worked together, we're already in a position that's not sustain sustainable in that we're we're allotting more school choice monies into our budget than we anticipate bringing in. And so in order to to make this a little more sustainable or to have it be a a less steep dip into school choice, we we have gone to all three schools and sat with all three principals, but tonight we're focusing on Lanesboro. And we've really looked at, okay, after two years of not really opening up new school choice slots for a variety of reasons, but primarily because we have not known for two years from year to year what our school year is going to look like, and we wanted to make sure that our energies were focused exclusively on the people that we were already serving and not further complicate anyone else's lives by by bringing in new students who would be subject to where our direction was in in the context of the pandemic. So we're really almost looking at at we haven't taken anybody for two years. We're venturing a a return to using school choice for what it was for, which is not to open up new classrooms, not to add costs to school, but to take pre-existing sections and fill up a few more seats in those sections where it's developmentally appropriate and academically appropriate. And socio or, you know, emotionally appropriate for given the developmental level and what's going on with students in the classroom. So so we'll be talking more next Thursday about big picture school choice, where we are at all three schools. Tonight, we are using one tool available to us to to help with a budget, which is school choice, and we are presenting a budget that reflects the addition of of 15 new school choice seats at Lanesboro Elementary School. And that's not a number that we backed into. That's a number that we arrived at by looking at, okay, we have too many students to compress to one section in a grade level, but we only have 13 students in each of those sections. If we added two students to one section and two students to the other, we would still be at 15 in each section. So, you know, what we're presenting here tonight is it 15 sounds like a big number, given the the overall size of Lanesboro, but it's but it's very surgical, it's very strategic, it takes no classroom because of school choice above 17 students per section. And it includes really, we think ultimately we will open up maybe a slaughter too in kindergarten, but it but it represents few to no new slots in kindergarten because we don't know how many kindergarteners we're going to get until kindergarten's been going on for a couple of weeks. We have a pretty good idea right now, but we don't really know until we get there and a little bit beyond getting there. It also includes no new open school choice seats in grade six, which is which is a grade that just size-wise, there's two sections, we want to leave it that way. It also includes no new school choice seats for our first graders that are moving into grade two. That's the one grade level that is going to remain with one section at Lanesboro Elementary next year, and we just don't think it's appropriate to add school choice seats there. So that's one of the tools that we use to arrive at a at a new budget figure to present to our colleagues in Lanesboro. The other tool that we used was was actually a reduction of of staff, but I do want to be clear, we're not talking about a layoff, we're not talking about an individual losing their job. Currently, Lanesboro is operating with 14 paraprofessionals total, that includes one-on-one classroom paraprofessionals. Next year, we will be operating with 13 paraprofessionals at Lanesboro. As things stand right now, you know, by way of and and we also just back to our our wonderful group of paraprofessionals that serve kids so ably every day. Across the district, we actually had paraprofessional positions that we were unable to fill this year. So they have literally been open the entire school year and missed the entire school year. So one of the beauties of being a three-school district is that even when we reduce in one place, we have other spaces so that a reduction in a school does not mean that an individual we care about is losing their employment or their benefits or impacting their family in that way. So I think with that, you know, again, I'll just finish up with kind of where we started and then Ursula, I'll take your question. That 15 number sounds high. We we certainly did not back into it. We arrived at it organically with what made sense, and it is one of those things that we will look at every single year. We also took into account, what does that mean for Mount Greylock Regional School, five years down the road, six years down the road, seven years down the road? And and sitting here right now, not including our our kindergartners or pre-K kids in the mix, and we have 177 students slated to be at Lanesboro Elementary School last year or next year. That's not including K and pre-K. We would this year, where where we hit a high point at Lanesboro of, I think, 213 students, so we still have a lot of room. If you go back five, six, seven years in Lanesboro, some of you may remember this from your own parenting experience, 240, 250, 260 students in the building. So we don't feel we're pushing the building's capacity through this. We don't feel we are lessening the educational experience of any students that reside in Lanesboro or New Ashford. We don't think we're we're definitely not adding costs to to the school or to the school district, and and we're not creating undue hardship on the people that actually do the work, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, the bus drivers, because school choice students are not bus or the or the cafeteria staff that feeds students every day. We think we've approached this respectfully and in a way that makes sense and will actually add to the this. Ursula, I think your hand was up first.
Sorry. You mentioned not adding any slots to the sixth grade class. I was just curious, is that this year's sixth grade or did you mean the rising sixth grade?
That's the rising sixth grade.
So this year's fifth grade, yeah, that's a bigger one. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
That's all. Thank you.
Julia?
Can you just speak a little bit to the demand for those seats and how readily they will be filled?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we we could open up 100 seats. That doesn't mean 100 seats will be filled. My brief experience here would suggest that we will fill all of those 15 seats, and and my brief experience here suggests that knowing what the waiting lists look like and who we didn't accept last year, and then my 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 eight years as superintendent in Pittsfield would indicate very strongly to me that that we will very likely fill those 15 seats. Which which is a credit to to the folks that make things go in in at Lanesboro Elementary School. Jose?
Thanks, Jake, and my question was going to be exactly what Julie had asked. It's good to hear that. I think what I'm I'm curious about is the feedback that you and Joe received from the Lanesboro Finance Committee and and potentially, I think, also the Select Board. Was their request to trim the budget requests or and/or, in this case, to find an alternative way to to cover some of those expenses? I'm curious about what their response might be to to this proposal.
Yeah, I I guess we'll know after the meeting tonight when the proposal is 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 hopefully adopted. You know, we had, as we did with the Williamstown Finance Committee, we had an excellent give and take with with the Lanesboro Select Board and Finance Committee. They opted not to give us a a number or a target quote-unquote to get to. Their their response from from really unanimous from every member of the Select Board and the Finance Committee was, we get it, we understand it, we we trust you all, we're grateful for the work you do, and we know that your needs are real, but but you know, the 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 percentage that we were bringing forward to them and the dollar amount of increase was simply not something that they could support, given the the other things they're working to balance. So so we hope that this shows a sincere effort to to recognize their their honest plea to us to please find a way to get this to be a more workable number for them.
And then, sorry, Jake, since there's no other hand up, just a follow-on from from Julia's question, and this is, you know, just imagining the hypothetical where, you know, we only have 14 school choice placements and not the 15 or some version of that. Do we have a plan in place to to deal with those kinds of scenarios in the budget?
Yeah, we we would, I mean, this is one way to think of this, if if you can sort of just separate the 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 opening up new school choice slots, one way to think of this is we're simply going $75,000 deeper into our existing school choice account in order to make the budget work for one of our member towns. You know, our thought, and and it's in some ways, it's unfortunate, we're having this conversation tonight around school choice, very specific to Lanesboro, because we wanted to present something that that wasn't just simply dipping into the savings account without a plan for replenishing the savings account, even though it's not a full replenishment. Next week at our regular school committee meeting, you'll be hearing about the the surgical approach that that Williamstown Elementary desires to take in order to serve some of our neighboring communities through opening up a few more school choice slots as well. So, you know, if 14 students come, if 13 students come, if 10 students come, that's that will that will be just a deeper dig into the existing school choice account, and and it will take us a little closer to the day where it's not sustainable because we are perhaps spending more than we bring in year after year after year.
And then, sorry, a final question, Jake, on the, and this is speaks to my ignorance of what the school choice account is and how where where those funds are generated and how they are how they're how they're used and maintained. So could you could you just explain to us what what the school choice account is and what that means to dig deeper into it?
Sure. So and and I'll ask Joe to fill in the precise numbers in a in a minute, so you're actually getting the the correct answer, but we have carried, and I don't know how going back how far, but but we carry in excess of $1 million of available school choice funds from year to year. Now, there will come a day where that will go under $1 million. I would say that day might be a year or two away if if we if we keep on at the rate we are, but you know, that's that's the $5,000 that follows each student through the school choice program, and it is money that we're allowed to carry from year to year. You you know, there's very limited instances of money we're allowed to carry forward. Regional school can do a little bit more than 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 a municipally-based school, but you know, it's simply an account that 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 ebbs, flows, but carries forward from year to year based on that incoming school choice tuition money. And Joe, if you could maybe fill in like what the exact of that is right now.
Yes, I'll actually. I will share it on the screen just as a this is what we had shared during the public hearing. So the the line that you'll be interested in on the screen here right now is is school choice, where FY '22, the the year that we're currently in. the line that you'll be interested in on the screen here right now is is school choice where FY twenty-two, the the year that we're currently in, we started the year with about one point two million dollars in the account. We have revenue that is currently on track to be three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars into the account. We are budgeted to spend five hundred and five thousand out to have a year end balance of one million fifty thousand. If we look at FY twenty-three, this is utilizing the numbers as approved one month ago. We would then start with what we ended in FY twenty-two. At that point in time, not taking any additional slots, not opening any. We were looking at three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in revenue. So some students graduating out of the school district, us not banking on committing to opening new ones, spending five hundred and five thousand dollars and having an ending balance of eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Now, what you will see next week is that at at two of our three schools, we'll we'll open up at at Lanesboro on a percentage basis. We will be opening up far more than 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 we have over the last couple of years, for sure. At Williamstown Elementary School, we will be opening up new slots. We might at Mount Greylock as well. So that three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar number will be the the will be revised to be significantly higher. Our expenditure, given the proposed revision that you have tonight, would be higher by seventy-five thousand dollars. So the projected ending balance, you know, we're still going to be spending more than we bring in. But we're trying to close the gap with the slots that we'll propose opening up next week. And a part of what this revision is really asking of of us as a group, but also of the town of Lanesboro is, we can defer a sizable percentage increase like the one that we asked for this year. We can defer it. That is not an infinite ability. And we need to make sure that when we look at FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, that we're really coming to grips with where costs are increasing, what that means for the ways that we can or cannot cut expenditures without without digging into what we're able to provide. So I think that's that's the message that's here. We're just trying to be responsive to the town government saying, not this year, not right now. Thank you for your presentation, but we cannot recommend this to our to our townspeople. We feel like with the two levers that we've pulled, as we look at this budget, that we we will hopefully gain their support and and make it so that so that this budget can pass more easily during town meeting.
Steve?
Yeah, so I'm very worried about sustainability, especially as we have a lot of other expenses. Healthcare, building repairs on the horizon, and we have issues with positions being unfilled. So I would like to propose postponing hiring the DEIB coordinator until we can pay for it at least in year one from E and D, without hurting the ability to get loans at a low rate. This will further relieve the hits of the town budgets. And remember that any amount we put in this year is also in all future years the towns are paying. I think it would be fiscally responsible to postpone this until we can do year one from E and D. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Ursula, I think your hand was up next and then Julia.
Yeah, mine was just specific to the school choice numbers that you just put up, Joe. So at first I had trouble believing the numbers, but then so three hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we have about seventy-one school choice students. That seems like a lot. I didn't realize it was that many. And then the fact that we spend more than we take in, is that because we have more students that are school choice out than in? Or we just spend more on?
The 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 revenue column there is, just like you said, roughly seventy-one students times five thousand dollars per student. The amount that we spend out is based on what we as a district decide to utilize out of that revolving account. So it's it's like a bank account where the revenue goes in and then we determine how much we want to spend out. We're allowed to carry funds forward. And we, as a district, have traditionally been able to carry forward far more in-choice and tuition accounts than many districts. So that this is. I think we're still in a relatively enviable place, but you can you can come off that mountain pretty quickly if you if you don't.
Right.
Figure out how to how to do it.
Well, so ultimately, that that five hundred and five expenditures this year wasn't on anything related to school choice. It was just money that we spent in the budget out of that account.
Yes, and and typically, school choice funds have gone to fund a portion of our our teachers' salaries across the across the schools.
Okay.
Yeah, the the towns actually pay the outgoing bill on school choice, just for, you know, understanding some of you haven't been dealing with school choice for twenty years, the the town. And and we we tend to be a community or communities that that, you know, bring in twice as many students as go out. Probably, you know, we have some students that attend Bard. We have students that attend McCann, certainly. But tho- those bills too are paid by those tuition bills are paid by the towns.
To not out of this, but.
Right, right. Julia?
Yeah, and a few thoughts. One is, thank you for reframing this around the like, I was thinking about the risk of not getting those students in. So I appreciate the reframing and I and then it sounds like that is just going to manage the risk. So if we can bring in the fifteen students, then we're, you know, that risk has been managed. But overall, what I feel like I'm why I would support this is we're coming out of a pandemic where if there's ever going to be a rainy day, it feels like, well, it literally is today. But it is also, this is to me, the time where we would want to invest more in our students. And I understand Lanesboro's position. We're coming out of a pandemic. We have a, you know, economic challenges right now. So of course, I understand why they would want to be pushing back. And so that makes sense to me that we might need to dip more in and there's a it's not even clear that we would have to dip all the way into that because we can we can backfill with with school choice students. And then I just want to speak to to Steve's point. I I understand the desire to say, are there other places we might cut in the budget? But I would feel and and that's a question I strongly expect that Joan, Jake, you have already considered, and that's how you landed on where you landed. And I just want to say that I would disagree that and and that this is the time for a DEIB director. Again, like if nothing else, we're coming out of a pandemic. We need our students to feel welcomed in school and we need to be working towards that future where everybody feels like they belong. And and that can't happen, that can't start happening soon enough. So that's I I am fully in favor of this and appreciate the work you put in.
Carrie?
Thanks, Jake. I also support the suggestions here that you and Joe are making. And we had a chance to talk about this in the finance subcommittee, but going to this statement, which I also made actually in the FinCom, that it seems like a lot of school choice students. Can can you just talk about where we are in the percentage of school choice students per school right now? Do you have those numbers handy? Because we're probably considerably lower than a lot of schools, even with these added seats, if we were to open all of these fifteen slots in Lanesboro. You know, if we're, you know, around ten percent, that would probably be ten, twelve percent, something like that.
Yeah, I I I don't have the numbers of.
Okay.
But but we can get that for next week, though, Carrie. It'd be a very, what what I can say, though, and and stealing a point from you from the finance subcommittee meeting is that I I don't know how many students were, how many how many new school choice slots were opened up in the 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 nineteen twenty year. I know last year we opened up virtually none. So so in some ways, we're we're taking a a two, making up for two years of opening up no new slots. I I do suspect when we when we pinpoint our numbers, it will be around ten to, you know, between ten to twelve percent. That there are certainly communities that that have twenty-five, thirty percent, communities like ours that are that are like us in size and school size, et cetera.
Right. And I think, you know, we just don't ever want to rely on school choice in order to fund our budget. And that would be problematic for our member towns as well in terms of for lots of different reasons. But I do want to speak to Julia's point also about, you know, this being a tough year for Lanes, the town of Lanesboro coming out of a pandemic. But what I'm understanding is that the town of Lanesboro has some big projects that they need to be investing in. Quite understandably. But you know, I think Joe is trying to be very diplomatic about how he phrases the next couple of years. But we can't promise to stay below three percent, you know, in the next fiscal year. We, you know, and in the same way that Lanesboro, the town of Lanesboro or the the leadership of the town of Lanesboro have asked us to lower our percentage. I also think it may be fair for us to ask them to consider maybe putting some funding aside in order to put a little bit more toward the schools next year when we may not have a healthcare holiday, right? And we may not be able to pass that on to the towns and you know, I also understand that we are the majority of the town's budget. And that doesn't leave a whole lot for the town to play with. But we we are very much wanting to stay in conversation about this. And I know that Joe and Jake will be in conversation with Lanesboro town officials and the new members of the town government. And hopefully, we'll have a better understanding of what their expectations are next year and they'll have a better understanding of what we can realistically do for them as well next year. So I just wanted to put that out there.
You. Thank you for that, Carrie. Just one clarification. Joe is good enough to remind me that I'm I'm not in Kansas anymore. And that in regional school districts, Ursula, we actually do pay the bill for our outgoing school choice students as a read. So Joe corrected my 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 sixteen years of of serving municipalities. And we actually have thirty-eight students across the district that school choice out. There's twenty.
So that the five hundred and five thousand is a part of that is?
I I still don't think that five hundred and five thousand is 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 necessarily. It's about a hundred and ninety thousand that we pay in outgoing tuitions. And that can be charged to a number of places, but but it's it's sort of a two to one in terms of how many students we bring in and how many students we send out through choice.
And our the the projected money needed to cover the school choice out is a line within our budget. So each building's budget has a line that this year was called, it's under Programs with Other School Districts, Tuition for School Choice. And so that's that's actually baked into the budget. So so it's being assessed and covered by what we by what we bring in.
One thing that hasn't come up in this conversation so far is whether Williamstown town officials are okay with the Williamstown assessment. And I think it has been stated, you know, you know, the meeting with the Williamstown Finance Committee went very well. They were over the moon with the presentation. I've heard comments via email and in person since then that Joe and Jake did an amazing job presenting to the Williamstown Finance Committee. And they are not asking at this point for any kind of reject reduction. They feel the town can handle it and that's not any comparison. I'm I'm not trying to compare the two towns here. I'm just saying that that's the feedback that we've gotten and that's why we're not talking about a reduction to both towns. We're just looking at one.
Joe, was your hand up and then Steve?
Yeah, I was. Part of the the beauty and the challenge associated with a regional school district is that is that we are attempting to serve multiple communities that have multiple financial realities in in each year. And and we're we're fortunate that we can be somewhat surgical about saying if one town is asking one thing, the other town's asking a different thing, we've got some ways to to try to address that. I I would I would say that also Williamstown is probably thinking, let's take our lumps now, hoping that those percentages will come down as we look out in future years. Lanesboro is saying something different. We can't take the lump now. Give us more time. We need to figure this out. This isn't going to work this year. And so I think that that's just, it's it's the very realistic conversation that that we get to have, that we need to have in order to serve the the diverse set of students and and the ways that we can we can offer. So it's it kind of it it it's an is it is what it is kind of conversation. And I think we're fortunate that with both town halls this year, we've been able to have a pretty healthy dialogue and try to come up with some solutions that can work.
Steve?
Yeah, in response to comments on the meeting with the boards, in previous years, I think the school committee you know, sent members to these meetings. Are we sending the chair of the committee or the finance committee to these meetings? If not, would that be something that we should consider doing in the future as the school committee is the final voter on the budget for the district? And just, you know, having us represented at these meetings?
Yeah, this year, we we were not able to have somebody at Lanesboro just because of something that was going on. And but but Carrie was was at the at the finance, at the Williamstown Finance Committee meeting. Yes.
And I was I was zooming in the background on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Even if the chair can't make it to Lanesboro, I think it's it's good for someone from the school committee to be.
Yeah.
Lanesboro meeting.
Yeah, agreed.
Carrie, do you want to make the revised motion?
Sure. So this language is from Joe. Thank you, Joe. I would like to move to accept the revised FY twenty-three Mount Greylock Regional School District budget and associated associated assessments as presented for the period from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of twenty-five million seventy-two thousand one fifty-seven for FY twenty-three operating budget and one million five hundred thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the FY twenty-three capital budget. The FY twenty-three operating and capital assessments to our member towns are as follows. The town of Lanesboro, four hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars capital and five million five hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars operating, combining being six million thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. And the town of Williamstown, one million thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars capital and eleven million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-two operating, combined being twelve sorry, twelve million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Carrie moves to, do I have a second?
A little second.
Millisecond. Any further discussion? All in. Jose, sorry.
So, sorry, sorry, everyone. Just a question, Jake. So the, in terms of next steps, assume. Uh, assuming that, uh, this motion passes by the school committee, you'll be. You and Joel be presenting this to the Lanesboro Finance Committee. Um, and, uh, we can expect feedback. From that meeting. In some way, shape or form, or at least be notified whether, well, yeah, you know where I'm headed with this. What was, yeah, is that, is that right in terms of next steps?
Uh, I, I don't know that we'll be presenting it to them necessarily. We'll, we'll be sharing the information with them about, you know, this is the updated budget. Uh, assessment. And, and, and as always, inviting conversation. Joe, I don't know if you have anything to add to that or not.
I, I think a- as soon as this is done tonight, we'll communicate that, that. These are the revised numbers that have been approved by the school committee. We look forward to hearing. Hearing more. And if they ask us to, to appear and present those numbers, we will certainly be there.
Yep.
E.
Yeah, Carrie, could you repeat the Lanesboro numbers? Uh, for capital and operating?
Sure. Um, four hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred, sorry. My, I moved, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars capital.
Okay.
Five million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars operating.
Okay.
Do you want the combined?
Combined, yes.
Combined being six million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay. So the, so the, the ca- the capital ended four ninety-two and the operating ended seven fifty-four?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so there, there must be, um, some decimal that's going on because, you know, two plus four does not add up to five. I was just checking the numbers before we voted them.
I, I heard from Ralph Stephen, uh, that Ralph Morrison, that apparently in his, in his math, he, he can do those crazy things.
Yes. Wow.
Let me take, uh. Steve, whi- which, which towns?
So the, the, the Lanesboro numbers, the four ninety-two and the seven fifty-four, the last digits of the capital and operating. Add up to, you know, something ending in a six, not ending in a five. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that this is because we're not giving the decimals.
Ye- yes. That, that is almost definitely what it is, but it's always worth. Confirming that. I just need to find the correct tab. Um.
The rest of the digits do check out.
The rest of the digits do check, yes. And so you, if there has to be a dispute, I'd rather have it in the ones digit than the millions digit. But.
Yes, it is the rounding issue. Because we're not going at decimal places.
Right, so. What do you?
I think the.
Is, is the combined one that matters, not the breakdown?
Both matter, um.
Sorry, I have your one.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a good, um. So the total should end in seven.
Also, then in seven.
The combined should.
Should end in seven, not in five.
Uh, sorry, it should end in six.
Ends in six, okay. Okay.
And what I will do is the, the document that was presented in the packet. The combined ends in five.
Yep.
I will. Manually revise that before it's posted so that it ends in six, because it's, it's probably five dot. You know, you know what I'm saying, but yes.
The combined would be six million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six.
Yes. And I apologize.
Carrie and Steve, are you okay with that?
Hmm.
Provision?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call alphabetically by last name, please.
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Anstine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, no.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next up on the agenda is the Mount Greilock Regional Schools Facilities Building Project Update and Change Orders.
Yes, and, uh, good news for your timing. Um. We, we've decided to postpone any, any votes on that until next Thursday's meeting. Um, the topic is generally that the, the cost associated with. Erecting and making the facilities building useful for the district. Um. The projected cost has increased significantly. And so we're trying to get the finest point that we can on that so that we just request one more change as opposed to. Request a change tonight and perhaps need to request another one in another week. So we're gonna, we're gonna get there and by next Thursday, we'll have a number two. Um, come forward with approval for.
Okay, great, thanks, Joe. So next up is the Williamstown Elementary School HVAC issue and possible use of Williams College gift. To the Williamstown Elementary School. Carrie.
So, um, we talked about this in the finance subcommittee and we were able to, um, take a vote. And rec- make a recommendation to the school committee. So, um, this will serve as. A motion on the table which only will require a second. Um, would you like me to read it or does anyone else have it handy?
If you have it handy, I say go for it.
Okay. Um, so the finance subcommittee moved to recommend to the full school committee that we authorize up to. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Wes HVAC. From the Williams College gift to Wes. That's Williamstown Elementary School. And that passed unanimously in the finance subcommittee.
I would like to second that motion.
Ursula, a second. Thank you. Okay, discussion.
So Joe can explain.
Yeah, um, so, uh, this. This all revolves around the condensing units that are, that are outside of Williamstown Elementary School that are about twenty years old. Um, over the last five to ten years, we've had a number of compressor replacements within those condensing units. We've also seen. Numerous issues where, um, for various reasons, they could not keep up with the demand that the, that the school was placing on them. Um, condensing units, um, in, in a. They provide the cooling and the dehumidification, so they are your spring, summer, fall. Heavily utilized HVAC equipment. Um, and, um, through. Trying to get them ready for this season, doing a, a deeper assessment of why we were seeing the issues that we were seeing. Um, it was determined that, um, the, the compressors, the lines. The coils that, that. That the fluid runs through, that then allow the system to pass air across to cool it and dehumanify it. That, that those had been contaminated in a way from the failures of the compressors, most likely. That have led us to know that the condensing units themselves need to be replaced. Um, we do not have another path forward. Um, for them. And the, the challenge, the, the added challenge is from a timing perspective. There are long lead times on procuring these condensing units currently right around eight weeks. Um, and so we need to try to get. This job done as soon as we can. So we've been going through the process of, um. Of doing an emergency procurement procedure with the state where we. Carefully specify what we need, try to get as many vendors in to supply quotes as we can. And then we, we sign our lives away saying we've, we've done the absolute best that we can. We followed all the rules and, and here's where the final price is coming in. Um, we, we feel comfortable that it will come in below that two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, but, but we don't have a final stamp of approval. Both from the contractors as well as from the state for this process. Which is why we're bringing this not to a seed type number for tonight or this. I will also add one last thing that we're incredibly lucky that, that, that. Williams College gift to Williamstown Elementary School given twenty years ago, twenty plus years ago. Um, its current value is two point five million dollars, thereabouts. Um, that fund is invested and grows in the same way that the college's endowment does. Similar to the way we more often talk about, um, the, the gift to Mount Greilock. Um, so the, the gift has, um, plenty of funds to cover. Um, but we don't do this without, without both respect for the, the value of the gift. But also the fact that we do have numerous capital needs that will be coming up over the next five to ten years. At Williamstown Elementary School. So we're not dipping into this, this fund without that. Um, that bit of, uh, respect and fear as well.
And I just want to add, um, something Joe was quick to add in FinCom, but neglected to add here. That the use of the word contamination is not a safety issue. Um, so I don't know if you want to explain that any further.
Yeah, um, so it's, it's just that the, the fluid running to the interior of the coils, it's not exposed to any air, anybody, anything. Um, that, that, that is unable to do its job the, the same way, the same way that it can or should. Um, there is no environmental risk. There is no risk to people. Um. But, but it is something that, that cripples the equipment's ability to function.
Ursula, did you have a question?
I did, just a quick one. I didn't, Rob, ask earlier, finance committee. Um, what was the original value of that gift twenty years ago when it was given?
I will, I will need to. I'm not a hundred percent sure right now. I believe it was a million dollars, but it could have been. A little bit larger than that. Um. I can come back next Thursday with that exact number. I actually just don't have the agreement in front of me from.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Anstine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Hello, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. I have no other items for discussion, so I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Miller, seconds. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Anstine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Hello, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. It is five fifty-two. We have adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out on this Thursday night for a special meeting. Really appreciated.
All.
Jake, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you, Christine. I was gonna ask, am I a co-host of this meeting? I have to ask Curtis a question.